Good evening, everyone. The Tuscaloosa City Council is now coming to order. We ask that everyone please stand for our prayer and then remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance. Let's bow our heads, please. Dear God, bless our proceedings tonight. Give us the wisdom to know what is just and the strength to do what is right. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Approval of the minutes?
Make the motion, we approve the minutes.
Second.
Moving second to approve the minutes, voting Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
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 Minutes stand approved. Any proclamation or statements by city council members?
I will not be at Jack's Saturday, Mayor.
Mr. Affell will not be at-
But if you need me, call me.
You know, you do that so much, it is breaking news when you're not-
Yeah, I know, I know.
Any other council announcements? Any agenda item comments by citizens?
No, sir.
We have no unfinished business tonight. Consent agenda, clerk.
This approves items A through C on the consent agenda.
Make a motion.
Second.
Moving second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 The consent agenda is adopted. Public hearings, clerk.
This sets the cost for demolition of the structure at 613 23rd Avenue East and authorizes the filing of a lien.
Move adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there anyone here which is going to speak for or against setting the cost of demolition at the structure at 613 23rd Avenue East? Seeing none, voting Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
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 Cost of demolition is set. Resolution ordinance is not of a general nature or permanent operation, clerk.
This approves the less than seven days special events retail licenses for Downtown Entertainment LLC.
Move adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in second, Ms. Franks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have ABC application 25-061 for Downtown Entertainment LLC. They are applying for a special events retail less than seven days. They would like to hold multiple events at fraternities the month of November on game days and inception till one Friday. Those dates are the 8th, 14th, 15th, and the 22nd. They plan to be there at 10:00 AM until... So they consist of 13 game day bars, one tailgate, and one casino night. The aerial views are up there for each fraternity house where the events will be held. All my reports have been filed with the city clerk's office. TPD will come and give their report, and then the applicant with any questions you may have.
I would note, it's, you'll go back to the slide with the times on it-
Yes.
Until closing time. Correct?
Correct.
Not just forever.
Not, not in, not in-
Yes.
Not in perpetuity until the closing time. Officer Branscombe?
Good evening, Council. Tuscaloosa Police Department, after reviewing these applications, we have no objection as they stand right now.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Ms. Hanks, if you would, please come forward and give your name and address.
Brandon Hanks, Downtown Entertainment, 504 Almond Avenue, Tuscaloosa.
Okay, any questions?
Will this, will this be it for this year unless there's a playoff?
Playoffs is gonna be the only question mark, so that'll be the only thing left over, hopefully.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Hanks.
Okay, thank you.
Voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Applications are approved. Good luck. Clerk.
This authorizes the mayor to add additional funding to an authorized 2024 Home Investment Partnership Program contract with Habitat for Humanity.
Some of.
Second.
It's been moved in second, voting Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This adopts the city's CAPR report for program year 2024 and authorizes submission to HUD.
Some move. Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This authorizes execution of amendment number one to the subrecipient funding agreement with Turning Point.
Some move.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This authorizes execution of amendment number one to the subrecipient agreement with Habitat for Humanity under the city's 2024 CDBG program.
Some move. Second.
It's been moved in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This authorizes execution of amendment number two to the subrecipient agreement with Habitat for Humanity under the city's 2022 CDBG program.
Some move.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This will authorize CNS to make and advertise budget and program changes to the 2018 and 2019 action plans.
Move adoption.
Second.
Moving second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This will authorize CNS to make budget and program changes to the 2024 action plan.
Motion. Second.
Moving second, voting Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This authorizes Tuscaloosa Fire Rescue to accept a donation totaling $16,000.
Motion.
Second.
Moving second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This will authorize a professional services contract with Skipper Consulting Incorporated.
Motion. Second.
Moving second, voting Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This authorizes a minor public works contract with Amos and Associates Incorporated.
Second.
Moving second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This authorizes a minor public works contract with Building Specialties Company for the Pal Gym.
Some move. Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This authorizes a minor public works contract with Building Specialties Company for City Hall.
Second.
Moving second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This authorizes a minor public works contract with Night Sign Industries Incorporated.
Motion. Second.
Moving second, voting Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This tentatively awards a public works contract to Premier Service Company Incorporated.
Motion.
Second.
Moving second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This authorizes a minor public works contract with Red Oak Paint Company LLC.
Second.
Moving second, voting Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This authorizes an as needed minor public works contract with Guthrie Landscape Services.
Some move.
Moving second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This authorizes a professional services contract with Grow Marketing LLC.
Second.
Moving second, voting Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This authorizes a professional services contract with Lamar Media Corporation.
Some move.
Moving second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This authorizes disbursement from District Seven Improvements Funds for the Mount Pilgrim Community Outreach Center Incorporated.
Motion. Second.
Moving second, voting Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This authorizes disbursement from District Seven Improvements Funds for Central High School.
Some move.
Second.
Moving second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This authorizes disbursement from District Seven Improvements Funds for Elevate West Alabama.
Some move. Second.
Moving second, voting Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This authorizes disbursement from District Two Improvement Funds for the community policing event.
Motion. Second.
Moving second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This authorizes termination of a contract with Lifesouth Community Blood Center Incorporated.
Motion. Second.
Moving second, voting Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This authorizes a new contract with Lifesouth Community Blood Center Incorporated.
Move adoption.
Second.
Moving second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This authorizes amendment number two to the fiscal year 2026 General Fund Reserve for Future Improvements Fund Budget.
Some move. Second.
Moving second, voting Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
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 Resolutions adopted, clerk.
This authorizes the creation and implementation of the Children's Toys for Parking Tickets Program.
Some move.
Second.
Moving second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Resolutions adopted. Ordinance of resolutions of general nature or permanent operation for introduction, clerk.
This will amend Exhibit D of Section 1942 of the Code of Tuscaloosa.
Some move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, voting Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
Resolution passes, it will be carried over to next week. Clerk.
This amends Exhibits A and B of Section 1942 of the Code of Tuscaloosa.
Some move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution passes, but will have to be carried over to next week. Clerk.
This authorizes amendment number two to the fiscal year 2026 General Fund Budget.
Move adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in second, voting Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
Resolution passes, but will have to be carried over to next week. Clerk.
This reappoints Dennis Connor to the Tuscaloosa Tourism and Sports Commission Board of Directors.
Second.
Moving second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Off and end of consent.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
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 Appointments made. For adoption, auditing accounts, clerk.
This authorizes the payment of bills.
Pay my bills?
Man. You're back at it again, Mr.-
Making Alberta great again.
By Mercedes.
Voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Citizens' comments and other communications. Any citizens wish to address their city council tonight? If you would, please come forward and give your name and address.
Hi there, I'm Gracie Vaughn, 1131 Jackson Avenue.
Hi, I'm Yennis Mendez. I live in 1125 15th Avenue.
We're here to talk to you guys about the ASE symposium and some involvement opportunities that we have. So I am the chair for the symposium. This is the American Society of Civil Engineers. It's hosted by the University of Alabama in collaboration with the University of Alabama at Birmingham, but we'll be hosting over 300 different civil engineering students in 15 different universities here in Tuscaloosa, so it's a really major event. It'll be March 12th through 14th of 2026. We'll have over 20 different student competitions and networking events. Our agenda, we'll have some competitions on campus, professional development sessions for students, we'll have a welcome event, we'll have competitions either at Lake Lurleen or Lake Nicole, and a networking event, and we'll also have an award ceremony. Oh, there we go. Okay, so these are all of our schools and attendants. Is there a place I should be directing this quicker? Just, oh, okay. Um, so-
If you figure it out, let us know.
Okay. Some benefits that we have for students are professional networking with industry leaders. So far, we're working on gathering sponsorships from different companies in the civil engineering industry. We've gathered about five to 10 so far. They get exposure to real world problem solving, leadership and teamwork experience, and inspiration for future careers in civil engineering. We have some students in action. We want to share some pictures here. And the reason we're here talking to you today is the huge undertaking. We have multiple different sponsorship levels available to fit a wide range of commitments. We're also looking for volunteers who want to get involved with running this event, and we also need caterers and swag suppliers, and we'd love to depend on our Tuscaloosa local businesses for this. So, you know, we have a budget, so we're, we'd love to support them. So if you have anyone that you think would be interested in this, some reasons that they might want to partner with us, it's, it's great visibility. These are the top civil engineering students. You can showcase commitment to the next generation of engineers. And some of our recognition will be in event materials, signage, social media, branded presence at competitions, and direct engagement with the student leaders and faculty. This is a quick summary of all of our sponsorship tiers, and then I have a volunteer interest form up here, and if you have any questions, that's kind of hard to read up there, but you can reach out to my email or the UA ASE email as well.
Any questions?
If you'll get with me afterwards, I think I may have a couple of people that might be interested in helping sponsor.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Perfect.
And I'll ask our clerk to provide me a PDF of the presentation, and we'll send to our city engineer's office.
Wonderful.
I suspect they may be, you know, very favorable.
Awesome. Yeah. It's gonna be great. We're very excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address their city council? Yes, sir, if you would, please give your name and address.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Ron Trey Dunn. My address is 2224 Skyview Lane, Tuscaloosa, Alabama. First thing is, on the west side of Tuscaloosa, we have a crosswalk. It's like pulling teeth to get an answer on what to do to possibly get this walkway painted. I'm not asking for any lights. I'm not asking for anything like that. Only thing I'm asking for is for us to be able to get some paint on this crosswalk. It looks like something from the army age with the color green on it. I don't care if it has to be painted Alabama colors. I feel like we got still the college on the west side of Tuscaloosa. It could be painted blue and gold. I'm just trying to figure out, can anybody give me any input, or what will it take to get this crosswalk on the west side of Tuscaloosa painted or get some improvements on it? It's one thing.
I mean- Mr. Dunn, the first question, the answer to that is, that's actually an Aldott-maintained crosswalk.
Mm-hmm.
And so I would talk to your state representative because Aldott maintains that crosswalk.
Okay.
Well, and Trey, I'll be, I'll be honest with you. I have, I think we've talked about this bridge before, and I think we did discuss that it is owned by Aldott, and I actually have talked to the state representative about it. I'm gonna be honest with you, what I was told was the state's not interested in putting any money in it. The money they'll put in it is to tear it down.
And that's mighty strange, because I'm pretty sure the one that's over by the VA, we had this whole news briefing on it, and everything-
That one's actually owned by the city.
Okay, all right, cool deal. All right, we'll move on from there. Dealing with the sonics that is on the west side of Tuscaloosa, this is currently what the sonic on the west side of Tuscaloosa look like. We got a fence going all the way around it. I'm pretty sure that somebody is paying for a fence around an abandoned building.
I'm sorry, what is that?
Sorry, this is the old sonics on the west side of Tuscaloosa, which is right across the street from Walgreens.
I got you.
All right, there's one picture of it. This is the dumpster area of that particular building. This is just sitting. All right, let's see here, what else we got. The grass that is growing up around it, it looks like this in different areas. My question is, who is in charge of this as far as getting the building tore down or anything like that? I was told that it was possibly gonna get tore down months ago. I guess that time has came and gone. So my question is, what can we do about the looks of it? Also, this is the fence that is going around it as well.
Ms. Kreitz, who's department head, she's our executive director of urban development, she, under her department is code enforcement-
Okay.
-working with the fire department, several others. Once you're complete, or once you're done with your remarks, I'll have Ms. Kreitz come up and address that question specifically.
Yes, sir.
We actually share your, your concerns as well.
Yes, sir. Also, I thought that maybe the chief of police was gonna be here. Couple of days ago, I went across-
He's right back there in the corner, the guy in the white shirt.
All right, I'll follow it, sir. All right, I guess over on Skyline Boulevard, we've been having some issues with the homeless people at the Circle K. I saw where one particular person, it seemed like an officer was talking to the guy pretty rough. Even though the guy was homeless, I feel like everybody should be spoken to in a professional manner, especially when you're wearing a uniform. This officer right here, and I had to screenshot it off by live, this is Officer Ray. The same particular guy, maybe a couple of days ago, I guess he had some medical issues going on. Once I walked up on the scene, I asked this particular officer, at the time I said, can you tell me what's going on with the guy? He said to me, I know more about the, about the situation than he does. I am sick and tired of some of the police officers on the force feel like they can talk to people any type of way. If you're gonna be a police officer, I feel like this should be something that comes with character. You most definitely need to know how to talk to people, and the way that they are handling people is most definitely not right. I don't know if anybody could, the chief could possibly talk to him. Mayor, I don't know if you make it talk to him, but something most definitely needs to be done with that. There's no way that the bridge between citizens and the police could be yep, I mean, could be dead if you all know, if they don't know how to talk to each other, in other words. We just gonna keep it like that. But the way he talked to me and the things that he said, most definitely was not professional, and I don't appreciate that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Kreitz, if you would, the Sonic in West Tuscaloosa, would you mind giving an update to the city council, including a timeline of actions?
Yes, sir. Good evening, council. Good to see you. So the Sonic in West Tuscaloosa, I think we're all aware, burned in March of 2024. It was not as substantial of a fire as the one in Northport had a month later, and so that, I think, leads to the conundrum that we find ourselves in today. They completed the fire investigation around April 1st, so nearly a month later, and they pulled the demolition permit application in August of '24, so they could pull out the kitchen equipment, the things that burned inside the structure. Their intention has and continues to be, what they have told us, is their intention is to come back. They find themselves in litigation with their insurance company, and they have been in litigation with their insurance company, we know of, since June of '25, but it's likely been before then. My office, of course, has code enforcement within it. Mr. Dunn, we'll make sure to take a look at those dumpster, the dumpster area. The grass is a bit tall in a couple locations, so it seems that it is time for another phone call to Mr. Sullivan, who is the owner of the restaurant group that owns that property. We'll reach out to him and stay on him. He has been fairly responsive. Every time we've said, hey, man, your grass is too tall, please go take care of that. The structure is sound and does meet the building code requirements as outlined in the International Building Code, as well as our codes for being site, the site is stabilized, the site is secure, and so right now, as things sit, it is how it is, and we will continue to keep the grass knocked down. Can I answer any questions for you?
Any questions, Ms. Kreitz?
Did you say this? Been settled with the insurance company now or not?
No, sir, they're still in litigation.
Yeah, and that could take years.
Yes, sir.
Because that's, that's what happened with the tornado. Because that's, that's what happened, um, with the tornado.
When I think about the, the gas station on the corner of McFarland and 15th, and how long that sat in litigation.
Years, yeah.
Yes.
So, and when you, you got so many situations like that, especially saying this, um, it can take years.
No, we'll continue to stay on them and make sure that that site remains, um, as tidy as it can.
And Ashley, to my understanding, the gate was pushed up, put up because of some people living and vandalizing the building is what they told me. That's why the gate was put up. And the city's not paying for the gate, the owner of the property.
No, the gate was installed by the pro- or the, the fence around the property, uh, we required that as the city required the owner to install that fence in order to secure the property. Yes, sir.
So let's be clear, because I think I've had this conversation before. We require the fence, but we're not paying for it. We didn't pay to have it put there, right?
Correct, ma'am, yes. Anything else for me, y'all?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kreitz. Anyone else wish to address the council? Yes, sir, if you would, please give your name and address.
My name is Derek Collins in 256 County Road 101. Good evening, y'all.
Good evening.
First off, I want to thank all of y'all for your service and the work that you do.
Can you please speak into the mic, the OBT?
My bad. First off, I want to thank all of you and all that you do and service that you do to keep the city moving forward. I know this means it can be long, and that a lot of complex issues come across your desk every week. My comment tonight isn't over anger, it's over concern and care for how decisions are being made on behalf of the people of Tuscaloosa.